Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. And before we start, I'd like to introduce the members of staff and council that are here for the viewing audience and those in our public gallery. At my right, your left is Mr. Darren Light, our Director of Corporate Services; Carolyn Machado, Manager of Legislative Services; Frances Chung, our Chief Administrative Officer. At the council table, Councillor Arnold is absent tonight. We have Councillor Rosemary Wallace, Councillor Ted Schaefer. I'm Mayor Peter Fassbender. On my left, your right is Councillor Gail Martin, Councillor Terry James, and Councillor Dave Hall. At the other staff table, we have Mr. Gerald Minchuck, our Director of Development Services and Economic Development; Mr. Gary Vleeg, our Director of Engineering, Parks and the Environment, is away. We have Mr. Rory Thompson, our Fire Chief, and Kim Hilton, our Director of Recreation, Culture and Community Services. The first item on the agenda tonight is I need a motion to approve the regular minutes from January the 21st, 2013, moved by Councillor Wallace, seconded by Councillor Schaefer. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all of those in favor, it is carried. Now, we have no formal petitions and delegations, but I am going to go up to our microphone area. And as all of council knows and staff does, on Friday night, we had our volunteer appreciation banquet. And at that time, we celebrated all of the volunteers in our community. And I would like to ask Mr. Bryce Jeffrey to come up here and join me if you don't mind. At the banquet, we recognize the passing of John Jeffrey. And I think it was an emotional moment for all of us, especially for Bryce and Mary Ann and the rest of the family, because it is a passage in our community that we celebrate life, we celebrate contributions, and passages are never easy for family when you lose somebody you love. But what you do know is the legacy, and I said that on Friday night in front of all of the volunteers, what you celebrate is the legacy that someone like John Jeffrey brought to this community. And he was and will always be remembered as one of those unique individuals who made a contribution, and I can remember many times. I wouldn't say sparring, but we jostled a little bit on issues, and I know many other members of council had a similar experience. But it was always with respect. I never felt disrespected, and I hoped I never disrespected John in my response on issues that he had passionately. And what I didn't do on Friday night, and I wanted to do tonight in a public meeting, was to say to you and the family, and the history of Douglas Parks goes way back in the Jeffrey family. And we felt that it would be very appropriate, as one thing that we can do is to plant a tree and put a plaque on it in John's memory. And the reason I felt it was important to do it tonight is a tree is a symbol of life. And as a tree grows, it continues to provide shade and covering and all of the things that trees do. But for John, it'll be a living reminder of his presence in this community that'll be felt beyond simply the time that he was here. And so I want you and the family to know that we want to do that, we want to plant that tree, we'll have a celebration when it's being planted, and of course, we want you to be there, to be a part of that, and we'll give you lots of notice. But again, as I said at the volunteer banquet, I think the key to all of this is that many people live in our community and make different contributions, and they're not all the same. But what they all do is they contribute to the fabric of our community and the fabric of what makes Langley City the place to be. And we know that John was an instrumental part of the definition of the city of Langley when the two Langleys separated. And while there are people who think we should put it all back together again, the logic at that time, and I think our council agrees today, of where we are was an important step. And it meant something very important to the people of those days today, and I believe for the future. So to you, your family, and all of your extended family, and especially your mom, and I know she's not well, she's in good care, but we send our best to her, and just want to say to you that we are going to do that, and we'll make sure that it is a celebration of life and legacy and all of those things. And if you felt you wanted to make another comment in front of the viewing audience tonight, there's a microphone, you're welcome to do that. If you don't, I'm okay with that, too, but if you'd like to say a few words.
I can never turn away a microphone.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and council and staff. For those of you that didn't see Friday night, it was a very genuine classy event, not only for our situation with remembrances of my father, but for all the volunteers and all the city workings and people and politicians coming together. And I use the word genuine because that's the sense that I got out of it. Everybody that was there had a true feeling that there was contribution coming, and it was flowing back and forth. And the interaction just showed how wonderful a community can be when that works. And as the mayor's alluded to, my father was a man of ideas, and he was a man of thoughts and generating. And since he's passed away, I've probably known him better than I did all my life, because I really started to concentrate and focus and to see, he was a remarkable man. And what made him that way was the gathering of thoughts, and a lot of those thoughts were focused on community, and his community was Langley City. When he got here, it was Langley Prairie, and for many reasons that have been discussed over the years, it became Langley City. And he endorsed a lot of energy through different community groups, the Board of Trade, and that into helping develop this as a strong city. Now, when I look around at these council chambers, and I see the focus that the councillors have, and these wonderful chambers, and very, very educated staff, then I know Langley City's in good hands. We don't always agree on every step, but if people did that, then progress wouldn't be made. You must move forward, you must throw ideas out, but you must always search to try and go in the right direction. And I think the legacy of my father is here in spirit with this council, and that this council and their wonderful staff are going to take the legacy of Langley City forward in years to come. And I know he would be very proud, and I know he's very, very thrilled to have this tree and Douglas Park offered to him, because that means a lot to us, and that I'm sure means a lot to him. So behalf of the Jeffrey family, to everybody here, to everybody in the audience, to everybody who knew John, I say thank you. Thank you very much.
And you know, it's good to grieve, and it's also good to celebrate. So, and I know you've done both. So moving into the agenda, we have no committee minutes or any other special committee reports, so we'll go right into the mayor's report. The next regular council meeting will be on Monday, February the 18th, and the one after that is Monday, March the 4th televised meeting. And we'll move right into Metro Vancouver. There is no report. Are there any questions for Councillor Martin for Metro Vancouver? Councillor Hall?
I always have questions on Metro Vancouver, because I still don't fully understand. We've been talking about changing some things in terms of the elections and governance and whatnot. And I was wondering about the governance structure of Metro Vancouver. In the regional capital district, when they have an election, the people that wish to participate as directors of the capital region run on a separate part of the ballot. Here, we do it differently for Metro Vancouver, it's by appointment. So I was wondering, does the regional government decide the structure of both the election and the directorship? Or are there provincial guidelines that guide the various regions that do that?
Councillor Martin?
Several years ago, directors used to be elected directly to the board, and from the history that I know of, it was not, it didn't work out very well. There was no plans. They don't decide on who the director is. The councils each decide who the director's going to be by a vote. As far as any legislation goes, perhaps Mrs. Machado could, if she has, I don't want to put her on the spot, but is it provincial legislation? I guess it would have to be.
I did work for the District of Sandwich, which is within the capital regional district, and as far as memory serves, but I can't be sure, I believe that those were non-binding elections that were, when the municipal election was done, there was an indication of who you wanted to represent you on the board, but I believe it was non-binding and up to the municipality if they wanted to appoint those people anyway.
So the directors don't run independently of their city council position?
Not to my knowledge.
And maybe I can add something, and we can check on this and provide council with update. But my understanding is that the terms of reference of Metro Vancouver, formerly the GVRD stipulate that, and that was approved, and it was approved by the province as part of the incorporation of Metro Vancouver as an entity. But we can check that, but I think historically, that is in the charter for Metro Vancouver, formerly GVRD.
Just a comment. I can see merit in both ways of doing it. Like if someone's sincerely interested in the position, and they do have opportunity to get extra pay or travel expense or whatever through that, it would not make any sense to run for that and not run for council at the same time. So in that circumstance, in Sandwich, as you say, you run for both positions on council, and then if you want to put your name forward in addition, you have basically a horse race for that directorship of the regional district. I just find it interesting that you'd operate differently in different parts of the province rather than having something consistent. So while we're looking at governance structures, we're going through, you know, some kind of corporate exploration and whatnot, and we had that workshop in White Rock about that, I think it might be useful just to explore what the possibilities might be within the metro region of change as well.
Well, we will look into the criteria that are there, and if they're enshrined in legislation or the Charter of Metro Vancouver, and confirm that, and then we can take it from there. Councillor Martin, you also had a bit of an update you wanted to do on the Gateway of Hope.
Yes, I just got some statistics from 2012 in regards to the emergency shelter. In 2012, they had a total number of bed nights of 10,980. It represents 8,000 bed nights for men, 2,951 bed nights for women, and two beds for transgender. And it's an average daily of 30 beds per night, with males representing 21 percent and females representing 8 percent. And basically, the overall percentage of guests that stayed only one night was 42 percent. And again, it's broken down to males and females, and the overall percentage of guests staying more than one night was 57 percent. In January, they had an average of 31 people per night. The extreme weather shelter was open a total of 15 days in January, which is a lot when you consider, you know, it's basically half a month. There was nine and a half guests per night, 70 percent males, 30 percent females. And the overall program this winter has been opened a total of 20 days with an average day of eight and a half people. The Opportunities Program, which is a program where people have long-term housing up to two years upstairs, is a bit of a struggle in 2012 with, basically, they have 25 rooms, 15.6 rooms were occupied. But in January, it did increase to 84 percent of 21 rooms out of 25, so it is coming up. We do have a new shelter manager there, and he's heading out that program. I've mentioned the thrift store, the new thrift store that opened in Alder Grove on 272nd Street. This is a major key to their economic success. So I'm always urging people, if they have any donations for the Gateway of Hope, and particularly in the areas of furniture, good-use furniture. It's one area that has fallen off. And I know when I tell people that they take furniture, they're very surprised, because most thrift stores don't, because they don't have the room. So if you do have any good-use furniture, you can drop it off at the Salvation Army on 272nd Street in Alder Grove. And unless there's any questions, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Councillor Martin? Councillor Hall?
If there's vacancy in the longer, the two-year program, I'm not suggesting that we go and cast for lost souls or whatever, but is there a referral agency from some other neighboring community that has overflow?
Well, you can't use the long-term beds for overflow. I mean, it would be nice if you could, but to get into the Opportunities Program, it's quite a rigorous sort of set of criteria that you have to go through to get into that program. So I'm sure that, you know, if our emergency shelter is full, and we don't have the extreme weather, we will put people to other shelters, even have them picked up up to a certain time. So I'm sure the Opportunities Program, you know, all the social services are aware of the program, so, but I do know it's a very rigorous criteria you have to go through, and you have to make a very strong commitment to the program to be up there. So they're not wanting to mix sort of one-night stays with long-term people.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that there should, this is like life restructuring, this longer, this two-year program.
The Opportunities Program.
Yeah, the Opportunities Program that you say takes real commitment, and there's some real criteria. And I guess what I'm suggesting is that probably it requires a relocation. And so if you're relocating someone, perhaps it's in their best interest to get them away from the environment where they were to the facility that we have. So I'm just wondering, if someone in Maple Ridge doesn't have the opportunity for that kind of a facility, is there some kind of a referral or something that could bring them to Langley for that longer-term program to perhaps turn their life around?
I wouldn't want to say 100 percent there is, but I wouldn't, I would be surprised if there wasn't a program like that.
Could I supplement that? There is, through the Salvation Army network, through mental health, through the rehabilitation facilities where some of these individuals come out of, because they've been rehabilitated off of drugs, and they're now wanting to be reintegrated. So they all know who have the opportunities types of programs. So someone from Chilliwack could be brought here to fill a space, because there's a need, and we have the space. And that goes on throughout the entire, whether it's Vancouver or Chilliwack or anywhere. So people do come from all over. They're not just from Langley. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, moving on to library happenings. Councillor Schaefer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a few exciting things happening in the library here. The first one is on Wednesday, February the 20th, from 7 till 8 p.m., and Shao Buzi will be here. He's the house smart guy. Shao Buzi is a home improvement specialist with national recognition. He has more than 50 years' experience, including over 25 years as a radio program host. So check with the library for Wednesday, February 20th. It's from 7 till 8. There's a monthly critique meeting, and if you're developing your talents as an artist, bring it in, and it'll be discussed by your colleagues. That's on February 25th again, 7 till 9. The Teen Writers Group is on Monday, February 25th, from 7:30 till 8:45, and this group is for homeschoolers ages 13 to 18 who are using the One Year Adventure Novel Curriculum. And the last one is by our local colleague photographer, writer, John Gordon, and that is on Saturday, March the 2nd, from 2 till 3 p.m., and it's the Magic of Morocco, and John will be giving a talk on that. So enjoy a tour of the ancient trading city of Marrakech and Morocco itself. So for these, please call the library if you're interested, just to make sure that the programs are still on, if there isn't inclement weather or it hasn't been canceled for something else. So the library number is 604-514-2855, 514-2855. And Shao Buzi and John Gordon will be very interesting to hear. So that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for Councillor Schaefer? Seeing none. Moving in, Mr. Chung, you're going to give us the engineering update tonight?
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Vleeg is away today, so I would like to take this opportunity to just give an update to council on the solid waste collection tonnage for the month of January. Still very early on with our solid waste collection program. We launched that on January the 2nd. I understand people are still going through the adjustment with the new collection schedule and behavior, going from garbage collection from weekly schedule to a bi-weekly schedule. But having said all that, I think the tonnage information that we have gathered from our contractor, Mtera, has been very encouraging. For the garbage collection, we're able to reduce the amount of garbage by 70,000 ton, which is a 44.8 percent reduction in the amount of garbage collected from January 2013 as compared to January of the same period for 2012. And with recycling, we have increased our recycling tonnage by 27,940 tons. That's about 31.8 percent increase with our recyclables materials. And with our green waste, we went up by 25,440 tons. That's 93.7 percent increase. So like I said earlier, we're still going through the adjustment phase, but we're encouraged by these tonnage results. And I'm going to provide council with another update at the end of February, just to see where we're at, but we're moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Chung? Councillor Hall?
I'm just looking at those figures. That looks really good, but we talked about a percentage diversion rate. So if I take all three of those trends, when we did the projected budget for this year, we talked about adopting for a year a 15 percent diversion rate. So just for this month, just to get an idea of the trend, what would be the diversion rate from these figures?
I haven't calculated that yet, but it's certainly, you know, very positive. Like you said, we did allow for 15 percent as a diversion rate for the first year. We're hoping as residents get accustomed to the new collection schedule and new collection practice. The study and the research has shown that potentially, we could divert up to 35 percent of green waste, organic waste. So we'll continue to monitor those tonnage and bring a report back to council. Thank you.
And Mr. Chung, that'll reflect on then with the new packaging regulations that are coming in in 2014, and also when we do negotiate a new contract, we'll have some really good information to look at our contracted rates as well.
That's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? I think it's very encouraging, and I want to thank the people in the city of Langley for taking up the charge and changing habits. And I think at the end of the day, what we'll be able to show is that it's a benefit not only to them, the bottom line from a tax point of view, but also for the environment, and that's perhaps the more important part of it. So, thank you. Moving on to the recreation update. Ms. Hilton?
Good evening, your worship, members of council and viewing audience. So the update for Recreation, Culture and Community Services for February, starting as always with special events. Our big special event is our second annual, is our Lantern Festival, and that is on Saturday, February the 23rd, 2013, from 6 to 8 p.m. at Douglas Recreation Centre. For more information or to find out some of the classes you can learn how to make the lanterns and decorate them, you can phone 604-514-2940, or check out our website at Onto our programs. On the screen here, you'll see the cover of our Winter Recreation Guide, and the opportunities listed within that guide are ongoing. We have various courses starting at different times throughout the winter, so please pick up your copy either at Douglas Recreation Centre, Tims Community Centre, City Hall, or you can also find it online as well. Or for more information, check out our website or phone 604-514-2865. Starting today, Cookie Monster Preschool Program is open for registration starting the fall 2013 to June 2014, and registration was brisk this morning. So come on down to Douglas Recreation Centre to get your package, or phone 604-514-2865, and one of our lovely reception staff would be happy to help you. We do have programs for three- and four-year-olds. Starting today, we are commencing with 18 different focus groups for our Parks, Recreation and Culture Master Plan. We have the survey results in, and now we're looking at getting some more detailed information one-on-one with a variety of people. There's three opportunities I would like to highlight here. The first one is February the 5th, and this is really for people who don't already participate either in our trails, parks, our facilities or programs. And that opportunity is for non-participants at City Hall from 5:30 to 6:30 on February the 5th. For people who are participating already, we have two opportunities for the general public to participate, and these are being held at Al Anderson Memorial Pool in our new multipurpose room. The first opportunity is February the 12th from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. The second opportunity is also on February 12th from 7 to 8:30 p.m. To register, and we do encourage people to preregister, you can phone 604-514-2865. Or if you don't have time to register, you are welcome to drop in regardless. So I just want to mention that all the opportunities are listed on our website, and there are 18 opportunities. And then this will be followed by a series of one-on-one interviews with our consultants in different groups. So we'd like to hear from you, we'd like you to participate, be informed, get active, and come out to our focus groups. And that's my update for February.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Kim? Seeing none, thank you very much. I just also, as part of the mayor's report, wanted to mention that we did have, and I mentioned it when the Jeffrey family were here, we had our volunteer banquet on Friday night. And I want to thank the staff who did all of the work to prepare for that, Evelyn Schellenberg and Paula Kuzak, and those that supported them in getting everything ready. I think sometimes we go to these events, and in this case, we had over 220 of our volunteers there, and we sort of take it for granted that they just all show up. But the amount of work that it takes to put it on is not a small feat, and they did a great job. And I also wanted to publicly thank all of our volunteers. The banquet, we only invite a select group from each of the various groups, because as I think I said on Friday night, to invite them all, we'd need a bigger facility than we even have here in the city. But I want every volunteer who wasn't there that may be watching tonight to know that we value your contribution, and those that were there representing your organizations or your volunteer efforts. We're there as representatives of every single volunteer in our community, and it goes without saying, but I'm going to say it, without volunteers, we would not be able to do what we do in this community. So again, thank you to every one of them. Moving into the administrative reports, we have a motion, and I need a motion that the Director of Development Services and Economic Development be authorized to attend the American Plan Planning Association National Planning Conference in Chicago, Illinois, from April the 13th to the 17th, 2013, and that all expenses be paid in accordance with the current city travel policy. Moved by Counselor Hall, seconded by Counselor Wallace. Comments or questions? Seeing none, all of those in favor, the motion is carried. The next item is material that, a request to counsel for door-to-door canvassing and Policy CO-25, that counsel adopt a revised Policy CO-25, a request to conduct door-to-door canvassing. And Carolyn Machado, would you like to speak to the report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, this is an addition to the policy as well as a conversion to the new policy format. And the addition is that each group or organization that applies for a door-to-door canvassing permit would be limited to a one-month period over a calendar year or a total of four weeks if that request spanned more than one month.
Thank you. Mr. Chung, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
Any questions? I need a motion. Moved by Counselor James, seconded by Counselor Martin. Any questions or comments? Counselor Schaefer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no problem with this, except could we make it a calendar month, as in a specific month, just so we wouldn't run into a technicality on short months such as February? So it would be a month specific?
So you're recommending an amendment to insert the words "calendar month" as opposed to?
Just month, please.
Someone like to second that amendment? Counselor Hall, any questions or comments? Seeing none, all of those in favor of the amendment. Going back to the main motion as amended. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all of those in favor. Opposed, if any, the motion is carried. Moving on to bylaws, I need a motion for first, second reading of a bylaw to adopt the financial plan for 2013, 2017. Someone like to move by Counselor James, seconded by Counselor Wallace. And Mr. Light and Mr. Chung. Mr. Chung, you wanted to introduce it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I pass on to Mr. Light to go over the proposed 2013 financial plan, I would just like to make a few introductory remarks. As counsel is aware, over the past several months, city staff have worked extremely hard to develop the proposed 2013 financial plan. And I would just like to commend all department heads for putting on the corporate caps on. Because recognizing that some of the budget decisions being proposed, such as budget cuts, they do have a negative impact on the departmental budget. And some of the cost drivers that affect the tax revenue increases for 2013, which is not dissimilar to previous budgets, include wage increases for management staff, union staff, such as QP and IFFF, RCMP salaries and benefits, and the RCMP integrated teams, reduction in taxation from property assessment appeals, and increased levy for Fraser Valley Regional Library. Counsel has directed staff over the past few years to come up with proposals for 2% and 5% expenditure reduction to help mitigate taxation increases. Each department has scrutinized their operating budgets to achieve this goal. However, these reductions will have operational impact due to reductions in training, supplies, and contractor services. In 2010, 2011, and 2012, we were able to reduce the budget by $166,000, $74,000, and $120,000 respectively. Counsel has also directed staff to be less conservative with some of our budget items in order to minimize the amount of unused funds at the end of the year. I can assure counsel that we do not budget for unused funds, and I'm proud to say that city staff are extremely prudent with expenditures and financially accountable with taxpayer dollars. With an annual operating budget of approximately $40 million, we did realize 1.4% unused funds in 2012. That's approximately $560,000. Some of the major contributors to the unused funds include snow removal, staff vacancies which occurred during 2012, which weren't able to be able to fill, additional revenues from building permits and application. In order to be less conservative with some of the budget items, we have reduced our snow removal budget by about $73,000, reduced our legal budget, insurance, and supplies by about $115,000, and be more aggressive with our revenue projections for building permits and application. Staff are concerned that if we experience a bad snow year, for example, we would expect that the snow removal budget will go over the allocated budget for 2012 or 2013. Having said that, in order to mitigate this concern, counsel directed staff to put aside some of the unused funds from 2012 into a reserve, what we call a bank account, so that we can draw from it if we need to replenish the snow removal budget, for example. What this means is that we will not be putting the unused funds, as in previous years, into the capital works reserve to carry out new or additional capital works projects. Based on the expenditure reduction proposals and less conservative with some of the line budget items, the budget reduction being proposed for 2013 is $382,315. With all that said, I'm pleased to inform counsel the proposed tax revenue increase for 2013 is 1.88%. Additionally, a 0.75% special infrastructure renewal tax levy is proposed to assist us with tackling the infrastructure renewal deficits. The total increase, therefore, is a 2.63% tax revenue increase. I will now turn over to Mr. Light to go over the 2013 financial plan in detail with city council.
Mr. Light?
Thank you, Mayor Fassbender, members of council. As Francis has mentioned, I'm going to go through the 2013 through 2017 financial plan. Tonight, I will present an overview of our capital improvement plan, describe the funding sources and how our infrastructure deficit could impact our capital plan moving forward. I will then turn our attention to the operating portion of our financial plan. We will look at the overview, service level increment, some larger cost drivers, as Mr. Chung has already mentioned, the tax effect of these changes for the average residential property in the city, and then describe the next steps in our process. The public can find the complete financial plan document, including the capital improvement plan, on the city's website, and that's located at www.city.langley.bc.ca. From the homepage, you can click into the financial plan open house, and there's a summary there of the operating budget and tax rate effects that we'll be discussing tonight. You can also download the entire financial plan document, where you'll find a summary narrative called the Budget Message, which will detail basically what I'm speaking about In the capital improvement plan, we are planning for just over $10.6 million in capital expenditures. Some of the larger projects include the Roberts Bank Rail Corridor overpasses for $2.8 million, property acquisition for $2.4 million, and work on the 48th Avenue between 205 and 207th Street, or 208th Street, which has components of water and sewer categories as well, totaling $670,000. We'll be working on the water main network, providing some looping opportunities between the pipes, and that improves the circulation of water within the pipes. The city is also continuing to undertake traffic signal upgrades at various intersections, and these include the cabinet replacements for the components that actually run the traffic signals. The city's contribution towards the Maple Ridge-Barnston Island Water Pump Station is $431,000. This is how the water is transported by Metro Vancouver, from the North Shore Water Reservoirs across the Fraser River to be accessed by our city residents. One of the future considerations that our engineering department is undertaking to include in our future capital improvement plans is how we address infrastructure deficit. What that phrase really means is that as our capital assets age, particularly the underground infrastructure like water, sewer, and drainage pipes, but also roads, and traffic signals, and street lights, we need to start replacing them, and it becomes more pressing over time. Many of the subdivisions in the city were built in the early 1970s, and that's about 40 years ago now. For example, pipes should last typically on the water side 80 years, but soil conditions in the city of Langley, as well as materials the pipes were made of, particularly AC water mains, that means that the lifespan of the pipes has been reduced closer to 50 years. The infrastructure deficit would suggest that pipes will be failing faster than when we can afford to replace them. So as an example, we have about 100,000 meters of water pipe in the city, about 60% of those are AC water mains. In the next 10 years, we anticipate that we should be replacing about half of those AC water mains. It costs about $700 per meter to replace a water pipe. So we should be allocating theoretically $2.1 million every year towards water main replacement. In over 10 years, we would spend $21 million. But we have only itemized $12.5 million in our 10-year capital plan. So that deficit, that infrastructure deficit, in just the water projects alone, is about $8.5 million over the next 10 years. There are basically six ways that we can fund infrastructure projects, through reserves, DCCs, development cost charges, grants from senior levels of government, casino proceeds, borrowing, or utilizing prior year surplus. In 2013, we have allocated $1.7 million from taxation and utility user fees towards capital replacement. As you can see, we are allocating $465,000 towards the water future capital projects, about a fifth of what we estimate we will be needing in the future. Counsel did increase the water rates in 2013 by $35,000 from the last year to start building, towards building this contribution to capital. But it's difficult to balance the needs with the extent that our taxpayers are able to pay. So in the general fund, we're also allocating tax dollars to reserves, to these reserves. We are proposing a specific infrastructure levy of 0.75% or $160,000 to be directed towards roads, traffic signals, and street lighting, transportation infrastructure, to help address some of this infrastructure deficit, as we make strides to replace aging traffic signals, with more funding as needed than what we currently have available. As well, you will recall in some of those projects that I listed earlier, that one of them was 48th Avenue between 205th and 208th Streets. This project is a significant project of $1.8 million. This small section of road is really just a small portion of our total road network the city has. So even with an extra $160,000, we're still only allocating $507,000 towards various capital needs in the city through our capital works reserve. So we need to increase the funding towards infrastructure. DCCs, before I get into casino policy, but DCCs are also, development cost charges are also a funding source. So developers who are building new multifamily residential in the city will pay the city DCCs based on the number of units that they're being built. Likewise, for commercial establishments, based on square footage. The city anticipates that the existing water pipes, for instance, will have to be made larger to accommodate new housing units, so the developer has to contribute towards this cost. The money goes into a DCC reserve, and as the infrastructure projects are built, the money is used to fund these projects. We receive approximately $1 million per year in DCC funding from development applications. The third area of funding that we have for capital improvement is through senior government grants, which help to pay for the capital projects. And in the past, our community has been very fortunate in receiving funding for projects like the Al Anderson Memorial Pool, the 208th Street, and the Fraser Highway Bridge Project. But due to continuing economic downturn, we do not anticipate the federal and provincial governments will be allocating significant dollars, grant money, in the near future due to these two levels of government now having to turn their focus on deficit reduction. Municipalities are unique in the three levels of government. Because we cannot operate with a deficit, we must always prepare a balanced budget that's in our legislation, whereas the two senior levels of government can go into deficit. Moving on to casino proceeds, as I have displayed on the screen. Casino proceeds do play a big funding role in our capital improvement plan. We anticipate $5.75 million in 2013. However, casino proceeds are trending lower with the introduction of online gaming. The first 2013 quarterly result we received last week was for $1.378 million, which is the lowest quarterly result we've had since 2006. So this is just another evidence that we are seeing a decrease in our casino proceeds that we're receiving. This is another reason why we want to introduce the extra infrastructure tax levy that's already been discussed, is to help offset the reduction in casino proceeds moving forward. The first $582,000 of casino proceeds is used to fund community grants and the enterprise fund. The balance is used to fund capital projects, and the bigger ones being the overpass and the property acquisition that I've already discussed. One of the other things that we have been asked to do is to, and we'll bring this to counsel to adopt a policy amendment at our next meeting, is how we allocate casino proceeds in the future. Currently, we've got a maximum of $150,000 going to enterprise fund and community grants. What we'd like to do is actually set that based on a percentage of the total casino proceeds received. So therefore, if we have a decrease in our casino proceeds, there will be likewise decrease in the amount that we're able to contribute towards our enterprise fund and community grants. The second point on this slide is that we'll also make an administrative policy to maintain $1 million in our casino reserve to ensure that the current annual expenditure plans can be carried out, should the revenue targets not be met in any one year. While borrowing is an alternative for capital financing, we must remember that if we can avoid debt, it does make the overall project cost cheaper. Borrowing over a 20-year term at 5% basically doubles through the interest cost, the cost of the project. Final source of funding is the unused monies from the prior year, that generated in the prior year. As Mr. Chung has already noted, city council has requested that when we draft the 2013 financial plan, we were asked to be a little more aggressive with our revenue estimates and a little less conservative with contingency-type expenditures that we have in our budget, like snow removal, legal fees, or insurance deductible costs. Therefore, we are allocating $210,000 of the anticipated surplus generated at the end of 2012 towards this bank account that can be drawn upon in 2013 if our experience is not as favorable as we have planned. Typically, the city has always transferred the prior year surplus to the capital reserve to help fund those capital infrastructures that we've talked about. While we haven't yet finalized our 2012 year-end, we do anticipate an operating surplus of about $560,000. We had an extra building permit revenues, a number of staffing vacancies, which did contribute to the surplus. In my opinion, the extra $350,000 after we deduct the 210 should continue to be allocated towards the capital reserves to help offset the mounting infrastructure deficit. In 2013, our financial plan includes $40 million in operating expenditures. Over 70% of the operating expenditures are funded through the property tax utility charges billed at the end of May each year. New growth revenues were $295,000, or 1.39% of our tax revenues, and the expenditure gap is $397,140, which requires a 1.88% tax revenue increase to close that gap. This means that to provide the same level of service that we had in 2012, with a small service level increment that I'll discuss shortly, we need an additional $397,000. Just as a point of note, the Consumer Price Index in December 2012 for the year ended 2012 in Vancouver was 0.5%. Some of the cost drivers that I want to touch on are the city staff wages, which make up $11 million of our general fund operating budget, and it's supported by the property tax revenues of $22 million. A provision has been made for staff wage settlements and increases, as well as movement through the wage scale ranges. Policing is the largest department in our city budget, about $9.6 million. We have 50 RCMP members in our contract strength, as well as city shares with municipal employees working at the detachment with the township of Langley, and they will also be increasing with their wage settlements through the township. Total increase in policing is $421,000, and police increasing reflects an increase in their pension and wage benefits and settlements for the RCMP members. Fraser Valley Regional Library is also increasing $71,000, or about 7%. We are experiencing a little bit different from the other libraries in the Fraser Valley Regional Library Association. One of the things that they're doing overall is to add 5% more to One of the things that they're doing overall is to add 5% more to the books and materials being purchased through the Fraser Valley Regional Library. But the funding formula that we have currently has a way of sharing the cost based on where the residents live that borrow the books. So what we're experiencing is that our neighboring communities are borrowing less books from our library, and our library, our own city residents are borrowing more books from neighboring libraries. Therefore, the allocation between the two communities is having -- or other communities is having an effect to increase our costs higher than what other communities are seeing. We did allocate $40,000 from the Fraser Valley Regional Library Reserve to help smooth this increase over a number of years. There is one service level increase that has been brought forward. The emergency program would like to bring on a half-time clerical position. Currently, we have a half-time position. They want to make it a full-time position, and we share this position with the township of Langley. This will assist with the coordination of the ESS volunteers, emergency social services volunteers, which are a great benefit to the city that we have these volunteers in this capacity. So this individual will coordinate them. Our city share of this increase from a half-time to a full-time is $17,325. It's common practice for municipal governments to communicate changes in taxation levels using a hypothetical average home in their community. However, as I've discussed in prior years, the city of Langley is a little bit different. The city's residential assessment base has a higher number of strata units, 5,561 strata units, whereas we have 3,389 single-family homes in the city of Langley. As a result, we find that the average residential value is not really representative of either the strata or the single-family home. So today, I'm demonstrating the two of them separately. In 2013, the average single-family home, which was assessed at $459,000, will pay $2,658 for utilities and taxes. This is an increase of $61 over the prior year, or 2.36% change. The actual dollars are going up by thirty-eight -- the actual tax dollars, sorry, are going up by $38, and the remainder is related to utilities. So on this breakdown of tax dollars of $1,747, the following breakdown, giving five different categories, is as follows. Policing is $636. So on an annual basis, an average single-family home pays $636 for policing services in the city of Langley. Fire services is $238. Engineering services, which includes our roads, snow removal, street lighting, et cetera, $162. Recreation, $199. And then I lumped all the others at $512. So there's a total of $1,747 tax dollars that are collected from the single-family home. That's about $145 a month for all these different services. So if you need a fire department or a police officer, they're there when you call. Our roads are maintained, and there are various recreational opportunities in the city. If you take the utilities, the water, sewer, garbage, and recycling, works out to about $75 a month, or $900. I know that I pay personally at my home for electricity from BC Hydro about $100 a month. Likewise, $100 a month for natural gas to heat my home. And $100, in fact, for tellus, for TV, internet, and telephone services as a comparator. So I believe we are providing value for our tax dollars when we're asking our taxpayers to pay. Moving to the average strata home, the assessed value of a strata home is $210,247. This is -- and they will pay $1,262 in total for utilities and taxes. This is an increase of $6, or 0.51%, and that's for the majority of our residential properties in the city. This percentage change for an individual property owner will vary depending on how their assessment has changed compared to these comparators. For the average business property, they'll see an increase of 4.25%, and light industrial properties, 3. -- sorry, 4.2%. The ratio between residential and business properties has been maintained, the same ratio that we had in 2012. The reason for this is because the assessed values of business properties has increased higher, 10%, while residential properties have basically remained flat for their assessment, and strata properties have actually decreased in their assessed values. In order to collect the same dollars from each of the property classes, we rebalance the ratios. This means that the rate has to decrease for business classes, which lowers their ratio. However, once this adjustment has been reflected, we increase the ratio slightly to cause more tax burden be increased to be borne by the business and light industrial classes. This ratio is now one to every -- $1 that we collect from a residential property, $2.31 is collected, in this case, from a commercial property, or $2.58 from a light industrial property. The average ratio, which is advocated by the business industry, is closer to one to three. So $1 for residential to $3 for a business property. And the city of Langley's ratio has been and continues to be one of the lowest in the Metro Vancouver region. Relating to next steps, we are having an open house where the public is invited to come here to City Hall on February 6th from 6:30 to 8 o'clock to meet with the staff to discuss any part of our budget. We put the total budget package, as I said, on our webpage, and we are engaging our social media friends through Twitter and Facebook, and are accepting comments through those avenues as well, and looking for the public's input. At the next council meeting, we will have a committee of the whole, where the public will have an opportunity to speak to council about the budget and provide their views to the budget, and providing -- depending on what those views are, council can make a decision to provide third reading to the bylaw on February 18th, and potentially the final reading of the bylaw would be on March 4th. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Light. Any questions of clarification? Counselor James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Light, just for clarification, the zero increase to the garbage collection, is that a direct result of the change in services in our community?
That's correct. So the garbage costs are going down and the recycling costs are going up, but because of the difference in the tipping fees between the two, we've left it the same.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions of clarification? Counselor Schaefer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank Mr. Light and Mr. Flack and Mr. Chung for a lot of work that they've done. I've got a lot of paperwork at home to prove it, even though we're on a paperless system. I've had many questions pertaining to the casino, and what you're doing is absolutely in the right direction, I believe. Over the years, the casino's brought in over $49 million to this city. And to the chief administrator through the mayor, we are a debt-free city.
Mr. Chung?
To the mayor through the chair, to Counselor Schaefer, yes, we are a debt-free city.
So the casino has helped to pay off our water debt that we had a few years ago, and that was almost $9 million. So Langley City is very fortunate to be in that select group of cities in Canada that is actually debt-free. Our capital expenditures over the years have been over $24 million. Though if it hadn't have been for the casino, a lot of the projects may not have gotten done, and those are sewer, water, overpasses, and the stuff that one doesn't see. Our community grants, we've given out over $2 million. And we've put money aside for the new TIM Center, so just the fact that we are getting a revenue source from there keeps our taxes down. And in addition to that, the center, the Hotel Convention Center, brings in over $700,000 a year in total property taxation. And then on top of that, we have over 500 jobs in the city here. So it's incredible to have all of that, and that's what helps to keep our taxes down. And gentlemen like yourselves, to put it all back into the system and make it work and keep everybody's taxes down. So I must commend you. You're doing an excellent job, and again, it's a great work that you've done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Schaefer. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Hall?
Are we doing questions now and comments after we?
Questions of clarification.
So we do questions now and we'll do comments once we
The motion has moved in second. It questions on clarity for Mr. Light and what he presented, and then we will be hearing from the public at the committee of the whole, and then debate and other changes will come up on third reading on February the 18th.
I'm trying to think of how I'm going to proceed. So I got maybe one question and a bunch of comments. So I'll go with a question first, I guess, and then go from there. The question is, I'm informed tonight that we have a surplus, or a projected surplus this year, $560,000, correct? And the last information that council received had that figure at 375 or something like that, right? Can you just inform council of the difference between what we had before and what we're getting now?
So as part of the budget preparation, in order to have this conversation, we go through a year-end process in order to look at all the different accounts that we have. And through that work that we've been able to undertake in the last month, we've been able to define the budget or the surplus a little bit closer to what it will be.
Okay. So as I understand it, then, over the past two years, we have accumulated over a million dollars in terms of surplus. In other words, generated more money than we needed to actually balance the budget. So last year, we shifted that record $500 and some odd thousand to capital directly. But this year, we're taking a portion of that and holding it in what you're calling a bank reserve on the operating side, and shifting some of it to capital. And then, as you suggested, reducing some of the budgets in an attempt not to generate as high a surplus next year. Is that?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, comments. This may go on. You can limit me at five. I think the budget's perhaps the most important thing that we do during the year, and I think we need to devote some time to comment about it. So I'll proceed, and when I get too long-winded, you can sort of say, okay, let's try and wrap her up, okay?
Wrap it up.
Too early.
That wasn't me. That was counsel.
Yeah. This really reminds me anecdotally of when my kid was young and playing soccer. He'd come off the field, and I'd say to him, Andrew, you gotta be a two-footed player. You've gotta run a different route on there. You should be running diagonal runs and all this sort of stuff. And I guess I was old enough at that point that I wasn't playing soccer in front of him, and I got that typical look that kids give their parents, you know, what the heck do you know? And he just blew me off. And then a couple of years later, he came back after going to one of those high-powered soccer sessions and had some elite coaching and whatnot, and he says to me, gee, Dad, the coach has given me some great ideas. He's told me that I gotta use my left foot more, and I gotta run these diagonals and horizontals, and that was enlightening to him. And I just had to sort of just nod and say, well, that's good. You're gonna be a better person for it. And I have some really positive things this time to say about this budget, because now the experts have come around, and I'm nodding and saying, yeah, after four years of plugging away, we've come around to using our left feet and running some different routes. Something that I may have been plugging away at for a long time. I'm glad you've come to that agreement. I think that the major difference here is we're using surplus to establish an operating contingency, a taxation stabilization, or what you're calling a bank account. And certainly, if we'd done that years back, we'd have a real whack of money, and we wouldn't have to worry about spikes. And if the big snow comes next year, and everybody goes, oh, my goodness, look, see what's happened? We would have been very well-prepared. I still think we're gonna be very well-prepared. Projecting revenues higher, but more importantly, reducing historically higher expense budgets, something that I think has real value. But the most value is that now we're saying that if we're collecting tax money from the taxpayer, it's going directly back in benefits on the operating side, and not perhaps disappearing on the capital side for some projects that one might argue at times were either cosmetic rather than functional, maybe even frivolous. I think that in the manner that we've gone about building the budget this year, we've actually reduced the actual taxation necessity to 1.88 as opposed to 2.7 last year. But there's a choice that's added to that, and while I'm comfortable with it this year, this infrastructure levy, staff originally recommended a full 1%. After some discussion, we've gone to 0.75. Perhaps next year, we maybe have a discussion about whether all of that excess that's being generated, surplus, beyond the budget necessary to do operate, has to go completely to infrastructure, or whether it might rather be allocated to other worthwhile projects, perhaps the TIM Center if we are short on the amount of money that we need for that, perhaps towards an art center. Perhaps we expand that to the 1%, or we reduce it to 0.5. I don't think that this extra 0.75 that we're asking for has to be entrenched forever. Realistically, it could have gone to the public as referendum. Does the public wish us to add this infrastructure levy? As I said, I'm in favor of it, but certainly on February the 18th, when we have committee of the whole, this is a question that perhaps the public might ask themselves whether they agree with this additional 0.75 levy, or whether they would like council to readdress it or adjust. All right. In terms of the capital budget, I think that we approached the open house and the committee of the whole with the idea that we would really like some input from the public. And I don't know how they do that without us posing some questions. So here's a few. We've traditionally allocated money for capital, and is that allocation based on cosmetics or functionality? So there's some cosmetic conclusions in the capital budget that I think that maybe the general public should get their head around. For example, in the past, we had the luxury of shifting some surplus to capital. On 208, we built fences. We added to the cost of that project by leveling them, but then we planted trees in front of them. And if you go down 208 right now, you'll see that the trees have hidden those fences that we spent extra money on. There's a proposal this year for a curb bulge added to McBurney Lane on Fraser Highway, I guess the question to be asked is, having spent $400,000 in the most recent year on McBurney, need we be adding another cosmetic feature? Or perhaps would there be something more functional that we might be spending that money on? $25,000 for pole painting, is that necessary? Are people so against teal? Are people so against teal that they have to have black poles? Or would that $25,000 be more wisely spent in some other area? And there are other examples. Okay. Is there a, second question, is there value in what we estimate to be accomplished? So I would like more detail on perhaps some projects. I know there's an estimate in there for $200,000 for a pedestrian bridge. I'm not a bridge builder, I'm not an engineer, and that's staff suggestion that that's, but I'd like some detail on the makeup of that particular bridge, and why a pedestrian bridge would be as expensive as it is. Are there other priorities that would better serve the public need? On my agenda here, I have notice of motion of a couple. I think that some things are important and need to be added to our capital expenses, and perhaps that comes by reducing some others. And lastly, are there priorities that would better serve the public need in terms of the quality of life for people in the city and attracting them to it? So I'm really concerned that we have not allocated as much money as is necessary for the building of the Tims, or for the creation of an active arts center, which is a possibility in the future. So perhaps we need to be looking at that additional levy. All right, on to operating-
Are you getting close, Counselor Hall?
Well, that's capital, and I think we should similarly have-
I'm just asking you to be succinct as you can.
Yeah, I'm trying.
Thank you.
I really believe that the budget is important, and-
You said that. Just carry on, please, Counselor Hall.
Should spend the time to go through those items, and the public should be well aware of what the money's spent for. So now on the operating side. I'm generally satisfied, and I commend staff for embracing some of the initiatives that they have to reduce that to that 1.88 plus the discretionary levy. But I still think that there's room to move, and there's potential perhaps for future amendments at third reading. And so there's a few. The straight allocation of traffic fine revenues to police capital reserve, there's opportunity there to deliver it to other protective services costs, and staff have suggested that there might be an allocation in future years to other than policing. And I think that that's a good suggestion, but I think that there's other operating costs that might enjoy that revenue as well. The continued funding of discretionary social services through direct operating taxation is still questionable to me, and I think that three, victim services, youth justice, and the community policing, could well be funded through other sources, community grant sources to ourselves, casino funds, rather than direct taxation. The continuation of a mayor/council and exempt staff remuneration tied to other negotiated settlements and other cities' decisions, I think needs to be revisited. We have an automatic policy that ties many of those wages to that of others, and I think it should be the sole discretion of this mayor and council to determine on a yearly basis rather than a rollover. And certainly, the township has done some work on this issue and revised their policy, and I think there's potential for ours to be suspended as well. So-called nondiscretionary tax increases that allow other jurisdictions to establish or continue practices that drive higher-than-inflationary costs, I think it's difficult for us to get a handle on those. I think we've made some progress in terms of having some input into the policing issue, but when I had the superintendent of police sitting in front of us at two meetings ago, and I asked the question, how a 1.75% wage increase actually ended up as a 2-point something or other increase because of benefits and something he described as retention bonuses? I think we need to examine those kind of issues and what's being imposed on us by other levels of government. Lastly, we're increasing our personnel. The recommendation is for an additional 0.5 emergency coordinator. I see emergency coordination as insurance, and we already have 1.5 full-time equivalents working towards that. Keep in mind that we're going to increase personnel when we do build Tims. I think we have to be very careful in increasing the numbers that we employ, because they become entrenched. And then in ensuing years, we look at increased costs. We look at the dollar figures, they seem low this year, but those dollar figures have been compounding. And to compound taxation dollars, while our population grows at a fairly slow rate, sometimes results in an observation by others that we are not holding the line as best we could. Since 1994, my taxes have more than doubled. We have just made $1 million in surplus taxation revenue, and we still ask for a taxation increase beyond inflationary rates. So I commend staff for trying to hold those numbers down, but I think we can go further. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hall. Any other comments or questions for members of council? I think the lack of comment is not an indication of a lack of interest. The hours that council has spent with staff in getting it to this point, there are going to be a number of other opportunities for council to drill in. So with that said, I'm going to call the question on first and second reading. All of those in favor? Posed, if any, the motion is carried. Now moving into the agenda, there are two notices of motion presented by Counselor Hall, which will be brought forward for staff report and debate at third reading. The first one is that Langley City Council add the following items to its capital allocation plan for 2013 to improve public accessibility at Al Anderson Memorial Pool, namely, a portable accessibility stairs at a cost of $5,000, portable pool lift at a cost of $6,000. The second notice of motion is that Langley City Council add the following items to capital allocation plan for 2013 to improve public and employee health and safety. Item one, an AED, Automatic External Defibrillator, packages at five locations, City Hall, Library, Tims, Douglas Recreation Center, Al Anderson Memorial Pool, Operations Center at a cost of $9,500. And the second item, limited initial staff training, training at these sites of $500. Moving on in the agenda, there is no correspondence tonight, there is no, is there any unfinished business? Seeing none, is there any other new business? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion for adjournment, moved by Counselor Wallace, seconded by Counselor Schaefer. All of those in favor? Motion is carried. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.